First on the agenda is Councilmember Larson will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, I pray and I thank you for the many blessings that you've given us and I pray in this challenging time, everybody's in a different place, struggling with different issues and the isolation, I just pray and ask that you would bring unity to our community, to our families, sanity to those staying home with their children and working and balancing school and safety to those who are serving the community. It's Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Okay, we'll continue with the city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming city events. There's none? Okay. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Dr. Brown? Okay. Announcements and recognitions by the mayor, just one announcement. As a reminder, students who are participating in the How Well Win Scholarship are required to sign in on the sheet located in the back. Students watch, students watching online can still receive credit by contacting Sarah Gonzalez at (210) 619-1015. Again, that number is (210) 619-1015. We'll move on next to the hearing of residents. This time is set aside for any person who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. We have one person signed up, Ms. Maggie Tillington.
Good evening, council. Just a few updates about the chamber. We have currently been closed, of course, but we have been teleworking and have been doing this for the past month and we are going to, starting Monday, slowly transition back into the offices, but based upon what we hear tonight and see how the city's going to be conducting their reopening as to public access and stuff, we would like to follow along suit. But we have been having really great communications with our businesses. We're very encouraged. A lot of them have been receiving their loans over this past weekend with the new release of the stimulus, a lot of the PPPs, a lot of the advances, a lot of them breathing a sigh of relief, but we know there are so many more that have not received these monies and so we're trying to do all we can to intercede for them and to get the communication out. We are going to be doing our May luncheon through Zoom. We are still having Tex Dot, he's still going to be doing the presentation. We are still having Tex Dot, he's still going to be doing the presentation, so we have registrations online. We're allowing it to be free for our members, since we're not feeding them, but non-members can come in for a small fee and I cannot remember what the registration fee is, I think it's $18, but we'll have Jonathan Bean, we'll have Will Lockett, they'll have PowerPoint presentations, we'll have a few surprises, but it'll be about an hour. Also, this Thursday, we have an employer lawyer, let's say that five times fast, employer lawyer, and she is going to be discussing what it means with the reopening of the businesses. There are certain laws, there are certain things that are going on, there are certain ways that you must notify your employees such as if they are furloughed and you are inviting them back to work and they don't want to come back to work, you know, what do you do with that situation, what are the legal responsibilities? So she'll be covering quite a few things about that and that is from 10 to 11:30. Again, it's another Zoom webinar, you can register online for that, it's free. And then on May 6, we have from our HR partner who is EESI about re-engaging the workforce, about how they can bring them back and tips how to do it well, how to go along with how the phases are going to be, where you're 25%, you're 50%. So we just felt these were things that were really needed and relevant during this time when businesses are asking us so many questions. And the last thing that I have for you all is, we are hoping that we'll be able to pass through these phases and by the first week of June, that hopefully will be a 50 to 75, actually, we should be about 75% to 100%. Hope so that we can go ahead and have our June luncheon as scheduled in the Civic Center, you know, barring any difficulties or anything going on with the city or any, God forbid, any other kind of outbreaks or anything, but we are looking forward to being able to be together again in June. And if anybody needs any help, any information, please hit us up at the website, thechamber.info. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dennis, is there any hearing the residents submitted in writing?
None.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda items. Item number one, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, April 14, 2020. Item number two, resolution number 20R 32, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing EMS debt revenue adjustments, utility billing debt revenue adjustments, and Assurts magazine debt revenue adjustments for certain inactive outstanding receivables and other matters in connection therewith. Item number three, resolution number 20R 38, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city Assurts and the Education Service Center, Region 20, for the participation in the ESC 25er consortium and other matters in connection therewith. Item number four, resolution number 20R 41, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing expenditures in the amount not to exceed $100,000 with Gayless LLC. Item number five, resolution number 20R 43, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing the submission of a grant application in the amount up to $78,398 to the office of the governor, Homeland Security Division, for the 2020 State Homeland Security Grand Urban Area Security Initiative, that's UASI program, and authorizing the acceptance of the funds upon award. Item number six, resolution number 20R 44, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing expenditures with Far West Environmental Supplies totaling no more than $90,000 for supplies and equipment during the 2019-2020 fiscal year and other matters in connection therewith. Item number seven, resolution number 20R 45, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing expenditures in the amount not to exceed $525,000 with Sid and Spartans Emergency Group. And item number eight, resolution number 20R 46, a resolution by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing an interlocal agreement for funding assistance with the Assurts Housing Authority and other matters in connection therewith. Council, do any of these items, do any of these items need to be pulled for separate action? None? Is there a motion to approve items, agenda, consent agenda items 1 through 8?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Dalla, second by Councilmember Hayward. Am I correct? Okay. All right. Council, any other comments? None? Let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have six ayes, no objections, motion passes. We proceed on with the public hearing. Item number one, number nine, ordinance number 20S 12, an ordinance by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, to approve a specific use permit to allow for operation of a convenience store with gas pumps at the southeast corner of FM 3009 in Rips Chrysler, city assured Guadalupe County, Texas. And this is our first reading. Mr. Coquelin, you have the floor.
Good evening, councilmembers. So again, this is a specific use permit for a convenience store with gas pumps, corner 3009, Rips Chrysler. Quickly, just for your reference, this is the subject property outlined in green, this street is FM 3009, and then this is I-35, and this right here is the start of Rips Chrysler. This specific use permit should look familiar to some of you up here. Just for a little bit of background on this specific use permit for a convenience store with gas pumps, it was approved by council in April of 2019. And one of the conditions for approval for every specific use permit we have is that a building permit is approved one year after the adoption of the ordinance, which was on April 23rd. So the expiration date was April 23rd, 2020. Progress has been made for the development of the site, including the preliminary plat of the 150-acre parent tract, approved in November, and they're currently in the final plat certification stage and the building permit review process. And despite this progress made towards the development in accordance with the SUP, they missed the April 23rd deadline for an approved building permit. The new SUP and associated site line you have in front of you are the exact same as the previously approved SUP, no changes to land use, still convenience store with gas pumps, no changes to building size, site layout, anything like that. And the new SUP will allow the applicant to actually take the time and ensure the quality of the plans submitted for the final plat, public improvements, and building permit. The expiration condition is to make sure the project's moving forward and progress has been made to develop the property. Planning and zoning commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of five to one. Staff remains confident that the applicant is committed to the project and is recommending approval of this specific use permit to our convenience store with gas pumps, again conditioned upon the following, that a building permit is approved within one year of the adoption of the ordinance, and then the use begins operation within two years of the issuance of the necessary building permits.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, the side of this on the agenda is a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Okay, second notice, is there any comments regarding this public hearing? I see no, I see none. Okay, final notice, any comments regarding this public hearing? Right. Public hearing is closed. Council floors open for discussion.
May I make a motion to approve ordinance number 20S 12? Second.
Okay, and that was Councilmember Scagliola, am I correct? Okay. Motion's been made by Councilmember Larson, second by Councilmember Scagliola. Council, any other comments? None? Okay, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to discussion items and action items. Item number 10, ordinance number 20T 14, an ordinance by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, authorizing an adjustment to the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget reserves for $250,025, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance and providing an effective date. This is our first reading.
Hi.
You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Mm-hmm.
I'm here this evening to talk to you about this opportunity to replace our 2007 street sweeper that we have. This particular street sweeper sure earned its money for shirts. It had a useful life of 120 months. Shirts actually extended that life to 156 months. This current street sweeper is not operable at the time. It has mechanical issues, safety issues, electrical issues, and then also hopper issues. And when I talk about hopper issues, this street sweeper operates like a vacuum and all of those rust spots that you see on this hopper actually represent holes or forming holes. We have made numerous repairs to this hopper and as you can imagine, the more holes in the hopper actually lessens the suction that this particular street sweeper can do to remove the debris from the streets. We received some complaints about the call to the street sweeping because it looked like the street sweeper went through and didn't clean the street, when actually some of it could be that it just didn't have the ability to actually suck the debris up. In, in the vehicle replacement program for fiscal year 2020-2021, it was identified that this street sweeper would need to be replaced. Unfortunately or fortunately, however the case may be, the street sweeper didn't make it to October 1st, so we are down to one street sweeper. One street sweeper is not adequate to cover our 356 total curb miles that we do sweep. The vendor has a chassis on the lot right now that we could purchase, which would allow us to get the street sweeper August at the latest. If we wait until the fiscal year October 1st and order the street sweeper, it would be an additional six to nine months after that date, so we would be without a street sweeper in, into that time period. So what we're asking is to transfer the $250,025 from, into the reserves for this year to buy the street sweeper. Then, the money that was set aside, identified in the next fiscal year, we would actually reimburse the reserves for the street sweeper. And another fun positive about this opportunity is that we did apply to TCEQ for a grant for a new street sweeper. We were approved for that grant and so we would tentatively receive a little over $112,000 after the purchase of a new street sweeper and of course, appropriate documentation from TCEQ. And if I can answer any questions about this, I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
Council, floors open for discussion. No one?
I just, and this is probably largely a technicality or formality for the ease of accounting purposes, but philosophically, I don't like the idea of using money, borrowing money from ourselves from next year. Certainly, is that simply just to make the accounting easier? I mean, certainly there's a way, I don't know, it's just hard for me, we haven't approved a budget for next year, so how do we know? We don't even know what the revenues are going to be next year. Certainly, there's a way to justify this through looking at current year expenditures. I don't know if, and that may just be an exercise, an extra work that does nothing. This may simply be done this way for accounting purposes. It sounds like kind of funny money, hey, we'll pay you for a hamburger tomorrow for, that I get today. But obviously, we need a street sweeper and not having the second one would not only make us inadequate in sweeping streets, but I'm assuming it would also shorten the life of the one we have. But that's really my only concern, is setting a philosophical precedent of, oh, we'll just, we'll buy it this year and in the future year, we'll say we paid it back.
So, want to speak to that, James? I can, but you go ahead.
Yes, we're looking at multiple options for next year and what we think we can and can't afford. Previously, we had mentioned the amount of money we did have in reserves right now. One thing we're looking at is, even if we have some sort of belt tightening, certain things that are necessary that need to get purchased anyway, such as sweepers or we'll start losing sort of service levels, would be recommended to purchase anyway. All this is doing is we have money set aside next year for it, it was in our five-year forecast, we need it now, so we'll take money out of reserves this year to make the purchase and then next year that just gets, we won't make that purchase next year, is all we're doing. We have the funds available, we don't think we'll need them to finish out this fiscal year, and they were going to be programmed into next fiscal year as a sort of a necessary purchase to keep our, our current service levels up. We thought it was, instead of waiting until October 1, we thought we can get on it now and jump on this grant that may not be available next year.
Seems fair. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
He just answered my question, I was confirming that the grant was for this year only, or most likely for this year only?
Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Councilman Larson, I don't really like the idea of taking money from the future that we haven't even talked about yet and pay it back, but I also don't want to leave $112,000 on the table and it's a better deal for us. Only question I really have is, with our reserves, we have, we have a plan to take some money out of our reserves anyway and we have certain caps for our minimum balances. What impact does this have on us, or is this, do we have enough wiggle room in our reserves where it's really not a big concern?
At this time, it's not a big concern with the financial report we just issued and got approved. Our fund balance reserves are sitting at about 50%. We wanted to keep at least 26% in there.
What, right now?
About 50%. And after we, if we go forward with the capital improvements of $4 million as we planned, we'd still be at the 35% mark, so we still have some cushion in there in case we need additional reserves for other, for other items. But next year, this was not expected to come out of reserves when we purchase it next We believe we can put it in as a operational expense as of October 1.
And I understand, but we, we had set a limit, a floor limit of 26%, and we had a plan to draw down the reserves anyway to that 26% mark, 25 plus one, but we have enough wiggle room in there where it's not impacting the 26% floor and it's not impacting the other things that we had planned to bring out of the reserves at this time.
Correct. We had planned to get us down to 26% in about two to three years, and this was already in the plan to be purchased and part of that model, so it won't change our target date to get down there.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dalla?
Just say, you know, getting an extra three years out of a piece of equipment that's used like that is, is pretty good. I appreciate the efforts on staff to keep that thing going.
Okay. Any other, no, no other comments? Now, is there a motion on the floor to approve ordinance number 20T 14?
No move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilmember Scagliola, second by Councilmember Hayward. Council, any other comments? Let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have six ayes, no objection, motion passes. We'll move on to item number 11, ordinance number 20H 15, consideration or action approved in an ordinance by the city council of the city Assurts, Texas, amending ordinance number 20H 13, extending a declaration of local disaster and public health emergency, amending the rules and regulations for the duration of the disaster, restricting certain activities, establishing penalties for violations, and providing an effective date and declaring an emergency. This is our first and final reading. Chief Long, you have the floor.
Well, Mayor, Council, excited to be here to discuss another update with you. Lot happened in the last 24 hours. Bring that up. So real quick, before I get started, I just wanted to start out giving the council some information on, as you know, throughout the, each day we get results from test results in, and so tonight, I just got word that we're going to report that Guadalupe County had seven additional cases today. One of those is in shirts and we also had one additional recovered, reported in shirts as well, so I just wanted to start out giving you that information. As we get going here, just wanted to, again, come back, we had to kind of wait until the governor had a press conference yesterday to give some updates and information out, so we're just here to kind of go through some of that. The timeline, again, just looking at the 31st is when the governor really issued the kind of stay-at-home order, as it's been known, and April 7th, when council extended our disaster declaration to May 5th. And then, again, yesterday, the governor actually issued three executive orders yesterday, 18, 19, and 20. 18 is the one that we're spending the most time on, but just in case you've seen the others around, I just wanted you to be aware that they were out there. So 27 just speaks to hospital- So, 27 just speaks to hospital capacity, the hospitals still have to maintain a certain capacity of beds available for COVID patients. And number 20 just redid the travel quarantine ban that was in place a little bit, took some off, added some on, so I just wanted you to be aware that those were out there. So, next, what the governor talked about yesterday is kind of a phased approach to reopening the Texas economy, and so that's kind of what we're looking at here in Phase 1, that includes dine-in restaurants, movie theaters, you know, museums, libraries, services provided by an individual working alone in an office. And the biggest thing that he put on these was a 25% maximum occupancy load that's already set on these facilities. And so, at this, when it starts out on Friday, they'll be able to bring people into the building again, but just at a 25% cap on their occupancy load. So, that's kind of, we're looking at a Phase 2 and 3 approach coming up. He didn't really give a whole lot of details as we get into that, and obviously, we anticipate that will drag out into the summer in some variety. And also, to point out here, essential services, so if you were operating as an essential service before, then you do not have to abide by the 25% occupancy load reduction. So, next, just wanted to kind of talk about city services and kind of what we're looking at going forward from emergency management and EOC, working with all the different departments and city management. You know, we're going to plan on opening up Building 1 on Friday, kind of going into effect with the rest of the governor's phased openings, and so we'll have safety precautions in place for our employees and stuff as well, but we're going to start out opening Building 1 where people can come in and speak to someone and get information as needed. Also, the library, we're going to start Friday. They're working now on a online checkout procedure where you can check out books, and then by probably Monday or so, you'll be able to come through the drive-through, and a staff member will bring those out to you and put those in your car. Also, you know, kind of our approach to this and looking at that phased approach, we feel like we're kind of getting in line with, you know, what the governor's actions are, just kind of going to the next step, taking a slow, methodical approach to going through each of these phases as the governor lays them out each time, and so this is kind of our start of that at the city operation level. Phase 1, so things that will not yet come back online will be some of the playground equipment, civic center pools, community rooms, senior center, so these will not open in Phase 1, and so we're just going to have to wait to get additional information as it becomes available and as it comes out from the governor's office on these. And a lot of these, including the library, as, you know, we feel it's important to look at and talk about, you know, even if the governor says, you know, fully open, you know, all city buildings on this date is fine, we've still got to look at, as a city, how we manage that with staff and be able to make it safe for staff, safe for citizens. So, we've still got a lot to look at on the backside of that once we get the okay to open something up. We're planning for a lot of those now, but it still takes a lot of city staff when you take a building that's kind of been locked down and now open it up, and you got to talk about sanitizing it, you know, is it once, twice? You know, those types of things are what's under consideration now as those decisions come out by the governor as we continue to move forward. Also, just what kind of mentioned out of the governor's order in Phase 1, not reopening bars, gyms, interactive amusement venues. Examples they give in this was bowling alleys, video arcades, massage establishments, tattoo studios, piercing studios, as well as cosmetology salons. So, these are specifically mentioned in the governor's order as not being able to open in Phase 1, so they're, you know, I think he's mentioned that they're looking at it in Phase 2, but a lot is going to go on over the next two weeks before they decide how Phase 2 is going to come online or when it's going to come online. Some of the things that we felt, you know, important to point out, that was, the governor did a dress about Phase 2 with some different size counties and things, but it was talking about, if you've got five confirmed COVID cases, five or fewer, then you could go ahead and go to 50% occupancy. And so, this, also, for Phase 2, there's going to be increased testing opportunities available all across the state. They feel that's very important. As much as we've talked about flattening the curve previously, it's important to, you know, still, as we open things up, we have to know where we stand. Is it working? Is it not? Are we seeing a spike? You know, what are we seeing? So, that's the important part of getting those testing opportunities available. Some other things that are mentioned there is community is prepared for healthcare transfers. You know, obviously, we have a great EMS system that has all those steps in place today, so that would already be done. You know, public health education, there's some specific things about giving public health information out, but, you know, our Public Affairs Department does a great job of educating the community with the website, Facebook, all the social media. That's pretty much a daily occurrence. Verify facilities are complying with some of the HASC and CDC guidelines, so that's just going around, and that's something we've done now. We went and visited with some of our senior center nursing facilities, things like that. We've helped them with PPE. Part of that process is educating on, you know, PPE usage, when to change it, when not to, some of the different rates of usage for PPE, so we've been doing that. You know, it's, it was mentioned several times about, you know, protecting our vulnerable populations. The governor mentioned that several times. That's in the order as well, and that's in some of the notes as we continue to look at what it would be like going into Phase 2. You know, procedures in place for a positive COVID test. You know, again, we've been through this several times in our community now, so we've got that process in place now that's working very well. Contract tracing is the next, contact tracing is the next kind of step on there. They're talking about really increasing that and trying to investigate all those contacts you may have had, let those people know. So, the step's taking a big push as it prepares for Phase 2, to get some call centers opened up, to get a lot more employees in the state that can help with this particular process. That's pretty much the kind of update of where we're at. For that, I'll see if we got any questions first, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Questions? Questions? Let's see. Oh, Councilmember Brown?
On the occupancy, if, I'll just use examples of a facility has an occupancy of 100, okay, so 25% of that would be 25. 12 of those are staff. That means only 13 customers.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Dalla?
This is somewhat related, but it's a question that's been coming up, and I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it tonight, but are we making plans or what are we having discussions about the 4th of July Jubilee?
Oh.
Oh, shit.
That's okay. All right.
I want to.
So, the short answer is yes. I mean, we have been in our EOC having discussions about the impact on Jubilee. We know there's a timeframe. We're not going to make the May magazine most likely with any kind of an announcement, so that'll leave it to June, but pretty much by the 1st of June, we're going to have to be finalizing where we're going. The contractor's been pretty flexible with us in terms of the fireworks themselves. One of the ideas that we've kicked around is the possibility of just having fireworks without folks being there. We just set the fireworks off and not have a, not have a public gathering. That's just one idea. A lot of it's going to depend on where we are with Phase 2 and perhaps Phase 3 moving forward, but yes, we've begun the discussion.
Councilmember Scagliola?
Yeah, Chief. Got a read of the revised ordinance that was sent out today, so I just want to, just want confirmation that this new ordinance reflects the procedures outlined by Governor Abbott, which will take effect this Friday.
Yes, sir. So, just getting into this briefly, you know, everything that's in Exhibit A here in our ordinance is directly in line, and most of it you will find is word for word directly out of the governor's executive order.
Excellent. So, are we requiring any restrictions above those outlined by our governor?
The only one that, at this time, that's above would be solicitation. We've added no solicitation into the ordinance at this time. That's the only thing that's above.
Okay. And finally, does anything, this ordinance, conflict with any of the county restrictions or procedures?
So, at this time, the county, Guadalupe County, nothing in here is going to conflict with theirs right now because they're going to either take an approach of not doing anything yet, or they're going to adopt language directly out of the governor's order, but we had a call with the county this morning, and that was, I'll let the mayor talk about that a little bit, but we are in line with the county.
Okay. Generally, Guadalupe and Colmel weren't quite as restrictive as Bear County.
Yes, sir.
I thought it was interesting that they could no longer enforce the mandatory use of face masks and things like that. Is Bear County now in line with what the governor was talking about?
I haven't seen anything new. Have you seen anything new come out of Bear County yet? I know they're set up to discuss it, but I don't believe that has occurred yet, how they're going to move forward with that. I'm not aware of any changes yet, but I believe they are going to discuss it in the next day or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me answer one of Councilmember Scagliola's questions concerning the county. We had a discussion with the county judge today. He is going to continue the emergency declaration only for reimbursement purposes, but he has really provided the cities to make their own decision based on the governor's guidance. Okay? And I just want to also, you know, counsel, we, you know, Chief Long put this together today. We just got notice yesterday as to what the outlines, the guidance were, and, you know, thank you for your patience in looking over this very quickly. Appreciate it. And Chief, thank you for putting this together for the council.
Councilmember Larson?
So, one of the questions I have is, so, I had this in the back of my mind. I wasn't going to ask it until Mayor Gutierrez said what he said, but with Guadalupe County extending an emergency declaration for the reimbursement purposes, I kind of wonder, why doesn't the City of Shirts do something similar? If these regulations are already codified and enforceable because of the declaration of the governor, what's the purpose of creating additional enforcement and penalties and fines for the same regulations at the city level?
Well, it's, I wouldn't say it's additional, it's just the same as. A lot of times, whenever a city takes this action, it typically gives them more flexibility or leeway if they need to change something, or if we find, a lot of times, when you just follow something that comes out from the state, the state continues to kind of change and add to it, and so what we find is, you know, when our officers are out going, you know, answering the calls, going and responding for service to some of these, that sometimes it becomes that it needs more clarity for everybody that's involved in that process of going out, talking to citizens. But it's also, it just makes a cleaner reimbursement process for us as we get through the process with FEMA. This right here just sets it up as an all-in-one instead of just keeping it out separately. So, the state, in going through FEMA reimbursement processes before, it's just a cleaner process to have your own in place, and you can always fall back on that during the paperwork process of that reimbursement that happens, you know, over a year from now.
And what kind of expenses are we talking about in terms of reimbursement and FEMA reimbursement? Normally, in a disaster, those are pretty obvious, but now, looking at 10 active cases in the City of Shirts, what kind of expenses are we incurring that we would need to be seeking reimbursement for?
So, the biggest one is PPE purchases, and, you know, a lot of what we do in emergency management is, you know, looking ahead, looking ahead, so we're buying city employees PPE. We're buying PPE for the public safety agencies as well, so that's the biggest, you know, expense that's going on right now that would be reimbursable, but there's, could be overtime costs associated with it that would be reimbursable as well. If the cases spiked, for example, and we put on an extra ambulance to deal with that because we spiked in COVID cases, the crews that were on that staff, that ambulance would then become a reimbursable expense, but it's mostly supplies, could be IT needs, could be things that we've had to, you know, purchase because of the COVID situation, cell phones. I mean, it's just a litany of things, mostly supply-related.
But any expenses we've already incurred would already be reimbursable because we're under a state of emergency now, correct?
Yes.
So, any future, this would just be to cover any future expenses. Do we have any idea ballpark of what expensive, expenses we've incurred to date from the emergency declaration?
A ballpark?
It doesn't have to be that. I mean, we're talking about $10,000, $100,000?
Well, no, I mean, just supplies alone, you know, we're looking at $15,000.
Okay. And then, and then, this is just kind of a hypothetical question, maybe even is for Dan to answer, but from a legal perspective, let's say, like, for example, not that we want to do this, but to understand what it means, the town of Coleville, they said, hey, we're open for business, really just flaunting. we're open for business, really just flaunting the governor's orders. What are the repercussions for a city that goes a route of that nature and for the citizens? So let's say I'm a hairstylist, right, and I'm operating my hair salon in Coleville. Am I waiting for a state trooper to knock on my door, number one? And number two, is there a penalty for the city for allowing that?
Definitely a Dan question.
So a couple of things I would touch on. First of all, you mentioned on the enforcement, why would we do this if it's just parroting the governor's order? One of the things that we've been doing with our cities is having them do this by ordinance so it gives you a local enforcement mechanism as well, so that you can issue a Class C citation if you even had to do that versus just issuing citations or pursuing penalties under Chapter 418, which is up to six months in jail and $1,000 fine. So it does give more flexibility to those who are having to enforce. To your second point, oh, and also on reimbursable expenses. So one of the things that we did, this is just an example of what a lot of your contractors or consultants have done, is that we create a billing queue for COVID-19 so that when your legal bill comes in, you'll know exactly which of those expenses and are, that costs that you incurred with us are related to this disaster so that you can recover those. There's more than you would probably think as far as when you, not just from us, but from everything that goes into this, the supplies and everything. So, and as far as cities who choose to disregard the governor or the county's orders, so it depends on what you are meaning when you say city, because if a city, enforcement's always discretionary. Any enforcement, you never want to make it non-discretionary, right? So enforcement's discretionary. If the city is just not enacting anything locally and their people are not enforcing whatever the county or the state has in place, the state or county can't make a local city's enforcement arm follow those things. The only time a city would have any kind of concerns in that regard is if the city starts opening its own facilities and allowing activities that are prohibited at the state level. And are there repercussions in that? You know, I don't want to be the Tusk case. I'm not recommending that. I don't know about Coleville, what they're thinking, if that's what they're doing, but at a minimum, you're going to, you're going to risk funding that you have through the state if you do something such as that, because whether it's just the emergency funding or if it's any grants that you have that are state grants or federal grants, if they're, within those grant assurances, all that fine print that we have to read, and I know your staff reads, there's often provisions in there where the penalties involve forfeiture of funds if you disregard certain provisions. Now, whether that would come into play or not, I don't know. As far as individuals, definitely individuals who operate contrary to the orders of the state are at risk of, I don't know if it would be a state trooper, but of someone taking some enforcement action against them. And it's, it can be serious. And if you're a license, if you have a state license of any kind, that's the most common thing that they can reach out and touch you with, is they'll suspend your license to operate.
All right, thank you. I guess, I mean, and a lot of these questions we can't answer because it's the governor that declared the orders. I just don't understand how it just, some of it just seems so arbitrary. How is a bar or swimming pool practicing 25% occupancy and social distancing less safe than a restaurant or retail establishment doing the same thing? And so some of those provisions, we include them because the state included them, but they don't make any sense. They're just a bunch of elected officials or their appointees pulling things out of a hat. And so that's frustrating from my perspective, just as a citizen. I can imagine it's frustrating from businesses' perspective as well because there's no, there's no logic there. I mean, I would think a pool, that's where I want my kid to be, right? Not in my house. There's chlorine in the pool, number one, sun's beating down, and they'll go to bed at 8:30 instead of 11 o'clock at night. Goodness gracious. So I have frustrations. I think a lot of people do. Everybody's different level, right? We view this differently. I think, I still feel largely that we don't know. Even the experts don't know. They just, they're making a more educated guess than we are. Things haven't gone the way that they've thought they would go, and they probably will continue to not go the way we think they're going to go, even when we change what we think they're going to do. And so it's going to have a considerable cost on a lot of individuals, a lot of families, one way or the other, no matter what we do, right? It's sort of a Sophie's Choice. But this, my patience with the arbitrary government mandates has worn thin, whereas I think y'all have seen me here enough that there might have been some people surprised that I kicked and screamed less at the beginning, but we knew even less than we know now then. And so I don't, I don't see any, I'm conflicted because I think, well, this is, these are stupid executive orders, right? They don't, they don't really have a coherent plan beyond, let's do something, right? Do something. And so we're going to do something, and maybe it means something, maybe it doesn't. But it's really outside of our guard. And so my understanding, again, and Dan, you don't have to get up to answer this, you can just nod if I get it right. My understanding is that us putting it, and this is where there's confusion, if we codify it in our ordinances with a lower penalty, if somebody, that's what I don't get, if somebody gets, if enforcement action is taken against somebody violating these rules, they're only going to get the lowest level of enforcement penalties? That's what I don't get. How does it help? Because wouldn't they get what we enforce plus what the state enforces?
So, that depends, right? Like with everything. If there's a violation of this ordinance or the provisions of the governor's order, by having it as an ordinance, which only cities have that option, right? Counties can't do that. When you go out there and assess that situation, if you want to send a message, but you don't want to drop the hammer on somebody, you can, if you cite them locally, you're citing them for violation of this ordinance, which is a Class C misdemeanor versus a penal code, a violation of the Health and Safety Code of the governor's order, which is going to go to the county. It stays local. It's just an option. It's one more option. I've...
But our, just to, to answer, but our law enforcement's, that's a discretionary choice just as not enforcing it.
That's correct. That is correct.
They could choose either or or neither.
Right. Going into this, like, so, as you said, this is all new, right? We're trying to figure out what is, what are the best things? And so I think our goal going in was to arm our cities with the greatest number of options available to them as far as what their authority is. This has changed so much every time, and the governor, bless his soul, keeps deciding his authority is different from what perhaps it was previously. And every time cities get creative or come up with something they want to do, then it changes. Hold on a second, no, you can't do that because I'm going to say I, I'm the only one that could do that. One of the things, and this is my pet peeve, since we're sharing pet peeves, is that as a home rural municipality, your charter and the constitution give you ultimate police power. Your police powers are derived from the constitution. Those cannot be suspended by the governor. I don't care how great he is. He can't suspend your constitutional authority to enforce police powers. So when we create an ordinance because we can as a home rural municipality enforce our police powers through the power of ordinances and our charter, and we cite that power and we cite Health and Safety Code 122 in addition to 418, which is the emergency authority, our authority is not derived from just one location, one statute or one provision as the governor seems to think or he's being advised. And so when he's trying to supersede all the authority granted, I don't believe he has, if you want to be honest about it. I don't, I don't think that, I think there's nothing wrong with the face mask ordinances that were passed by home rural municipalities. I'd love for one of them to challenge it. I haven't found a taker yet, but I'd love for one of them to challenge the fact that they can't do that. So it's a long way of saying, when we look at these, when we look at these, we, Chief and I had the conversation, a couple of conversations about exactly what you're saying. Do we need to do this? And I was straight up saying, you know, I mean, it's, if you feel like you need to locally to have those local options and to have your emergency declaration extended further because of the reimbursements and things such as that, fine, you don't have to list all those same things that the governor's orders does, but you can, or you can just reference them and put those guidelines on your website or whatever. They issued a whole manual of guidelines for businesses and consumers. So there's a lot of information out there. I think that your greatest options are preserved by extending this and staying in lockstep with the governor, if that's what your counties are doing, because even if you don't do it, if that's what the counties do, it's in place anyway, because that's the rank of the authority, governor to county to the municipalities.
So that's what, I guess, I guess it's the million-dollar question, yeah. That's what I'm struggling with, though, is this idea that, well, we should pass an ordinance because we have the authority within our jurisdiction to pass that ordinance, and we should make it match what the governor's saying. Then it's pro forma. If that's the reality, we should have a philosophical conversation about what we want for the city of Shirts and pass one that's for the city of Shirts that says, hey, if you want to operate a hair salon out of your home and it's one person and you're wearing a mask and you're washing your hands, do it and we'll follow the, you know, we won't enforce it because, you know what I'm saying? Like, maybe that's not what council wants to do. I'm saying if we're going to pass an ordinance that's exerting our authority as a municipality, then let's...
Right. We're going to have problems if we deviate from the governor's order if we try to make it less strict.
Like what kind of problem?
We can make it more strict. It'd probably be, would not be enforceable. So, I mean, if y'all want to do that and have it not enforceable, what a waste of our time.
Well, I mean, that's, well, that's why it goes back to my original question. Why wouldn't we just say, okay, we're going to extend an emergency declaration that coincides with the timeline of the government's executive orders, but there's no, there's no definition of violations in our own city? Like, it's, okay, this is what the governor said.
No, there's, I would say that there are definitions, and that's what the governor has prescribed. That's what, that's what we would be enforcing in our own city. So, yeah, I must stand to reason of that.
I guess another question, then, what are we enforcing it? Are we knocking on doors and saying, hey, you're cutting someone's hair?
Let me talk to that. So we've not issued a single citation. What we have had, and I think this is a tribute to our police force and to the leadership in the city, is that we've had voluntary compliance in every instance. We have issued some warnings, but we have not had to go in like San Antonio has and issued any citations. We've not had somebody bowl up and say, you know, we're just not going to, not going to do what you tell us to do because it's our constitutional right, et cetera, et cetera. Just haven't had it. So I think that has worked well. My own opinion is we have done what the governor, we have, we've gone with the governor this far. He's not perfect. We're not perfect, but it seems to have held together. And it does seem like it would be logical for us to continue down that road. And I think, you know, Dan can comment on this, we would have trouble if we decided to say, okay, governor, we're going to throw your stuff out. Doesn't work for Shirts, and we're going to do our own thing. I just think, you know, that's going to be a prescription for problems with that, but...
Well, and I guess I'll end with this. I think voluntary compliance with the threat of penalty for not compliance is not voluntary, but I think you answered all of my questions.
Okay. Councilmember Hayward?
So I have to concur with Councilman Larson on this one. I'm having a hard time struggling with this because I know we're doing this because we want to get reimbursement, but then the next question I have is, with everyone wanting money from FEMA, will FEMA be giving money because everyone in the nation just about is suffering from this COVID pandemic? So we're hoping that we'll get money back when we may not, and we're doing something. And are we doing it for the right reasons? Are we doing it based on fear because we're afraid of all the things that's out there? Are we doing it because when you look at different reports and different people, you have emergency room doctors saying one thing, you have lab, you know, pathologists saying another, when you have all these different people coming up with all these different, oh, this is fine, no, this is fine. Oh, you should go out, no, you should not. This kills it, that doesn't. It's just a mind-blowing thing. And then to know that we're doing this, and I know everyone says not to compare it to the flu, but we don't do this for the flu, and we're doing this to slow down, to flatten the curve, but then when you read the definition of kind of flattening the curve, it's almost like we're just slowing the process of everyone getting sick all at one time. That's pretty much what we're doing. And then I think about, it's a virus. Viruses have a life. They go dormant, they come back. This is going to come back at some form. And when you're hearing some people saying hot and humidity kills it, well, we're hot and humid, so are we really doing this for, what, I guess I'm just struggling because I keep thinking, why are we really doing this now? These are the things that we're finding out, and I know every day things change, but I keep going, we're affecting so many lives in so many ways with doing these things that is it worth affecting all the lives? Even with, when we're talking about all this extra overtime, or we having people go out, you've got, not necessarily here that I don't think it's happening, but in some places you've got neighbors calling the police on neighbors. I mean, it's like we're almost back in a time of, you know, going back to the stasi where they're reporting people for doing certain things. And I'm just kind of having that struggle with, even if we do this, is FEMA still going to have enough money to dish out or they can say, well, Shirts, you're a little bit smaller than San Antonio. San Antonio had a little bit more, so we're only going to give you about 10% or 5% of your cost. So then was it really worth the effort in causing all of this other, all the other things that go along with this, with people losing jobs, low, you know, people staying at home, having to deal with their kids and, you know, all of these things, and then people wanting to know why their kids can't go on a playscape in a neighborhood because it's closed down and, oh, since the sun kills it, why can't my kid play? These are the things that I guess I just struggle with so hard in wanting to say this is the right thing to do.
I would concur. I think, you know, that's what we're seeing, the questions we get, you know, I mean, just our public affairs questions that we get on Facebook, that's exactly what we're seeing in the city. From the community, it's some, you know, over here, some over here. It's all over the place. So I think it's, you know, concur.
So I'll just say this. You don't have to pass it. You don't have to, you don't have to extend our ordinance, but we still got the governor's. We're still going to have it. We're not going to, tonight, we're not going to take that away. I don't, I don't see any way that the city council of Shirts can just say, we're not going to, we're not going to play with your silly order. So we're still going to have it whether we pass our thing or not.
Councilmember Dollar?
I just want to comment that I also agree with Councilman Larson there on the comment about the bars and the restaurants. I don't see there's really any difference between going into a restaurant and ordering a drink or going into a so-called bar and ordering a drink and getting a plate of nachos to go with it. Bottom line, it's pretty much the same thing. And the fact that that category of business is being penalized simply by the nature of the business doesn't seem right or fair, but it is what it is. The state and the county do have superseding authority and certainly, you know, agreeing with or not, we're going to have to live by those rules, and we're going to have to do the best we can for our community and for our citizens. And, you know, going forward, you know, the idea on Phase Two with protecting the vulnerable populations, I think is one of the key discussion points that we're going to need to have, is that as we get to Phase Two, you know, what can we do as a community to help protect those populations? Because that's the way, in my opinion, this should have been handled in the first place, that a quarantine is to keep the sick people away from the healthy people and not vice versa. And that's how we need to move forward on this. And I hope at some point the higher-ups at the county and the state will see it that way as well. That's all I have.
Counsel, any other comments? Councilmember Brown?
Again, concur on all those things on a personal basis, but it's obvious that our reluctant compliance has kept the Guadalupe County numbers down to a minimum. Whether you agree with the process or not, you know, it's done, it's done its job, it's done its damage. But, so reluctant compliance is probably where we need to be at this point. And if we were going to fight it, needed to fight it up front, not in the back end. You know, now it's, now it's time to progress as quickly as possible, as smartly as possible, and get these people that are affected, you know, back to where they should be, you know, earning wages and taking care of their families and... earning wages and taking care of their families and things along that line. So, you know, again, don't have to agree with everything to make sure that, you know, on a personal basis, to make sure that we're doing the right thing at the end of the day.
Councilmember Larson?
So, and this is setting an effective date. So we would determine the effective date of this ordinance or it's already in the, I read the ordinance had seen in there, May 5th or, because I know the mayor, the governor's ends on April, or May 1st?
Yes, his new one starts May 1st.
Okay. And so this ordinance takes effect and expires when?
Takes effect May 4th. I mean, April 30th at 11:59.
Okay.
So the governor does 12:01. We've always done 11:59.
Okay. And I know Dr. Brown is technically correct in that no matter what we do, this stays here. But I'm of a personality that says I would happily tell the governor that we don't care what he does and we're going to do our own thing. That's the governor listening in right now. I take it back. And so I don't think, I certainly, I would be shocked if I was a majority member of council with that. But I would have half a mind to tell our citizens, hey, you need to be safe, you need to socially distance, you need to consider about personal protection equipment for you and your family, but you need to do so on a voluntary basis and the governor can take his executive order and file it in a dark, clammy space. But, so, so I guess that's my commentary. The question goes back to the, so this takes effect when the, when the previous one we passed cancels and this comes into place?
No, this would supersede that one. So it was to go to May 5th, so this would supersede that and start this new one on Thursday night, 11:59.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The expiration is?
Yes, the expiration date on this is out to May 26th. And that's just in preparation of being able to respond to the phase two, if it comes, when it comes. This is just setting us up to be ready to respond to that.
Counsel, any other comments? Councilmember Skagliola?
In light of all this, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 20H15.
Second?
Okay. I have a couple of comments before we, you know, counsel, you all brought a lot of interesting points and topics to this ordinance. And, you know, that's the struggles and the challenges that we have when we have our ELC meetings is what is in the best interest of this city? And that's, and that's what we have to tackle is those challenges. Not only that, we have to take a proactive approach as to what's coming up next. Like we said, phase two. We mentioned phase two, but we still don't have what we can do in phase two. But those are the actions that our ELC is actually taking. You know, we will never know what we did here or in the past. We can never quantify the impact we had. There's just no way we can. All you can do is say that we did the best we can for this city. We're never going to please everyone because I get those messages either, I get those messages also saying, I'm not doing enough. And I'm also getting messages saying, I'm too strict. And, you know, it is what it is. And, you know, the only thing we did different than the governor is the solicitation. And, you know, this order that we have on May 5th, it is strict. That's why we have to reduce it. And that's why this one has to take effect on the 30th is to lessen the restrictions that we have. With that, motion's been made by Councilmember Skagliola, second by Councilmember Davis. Counsel, any other comments? If not, let's call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, we have five ayes, one nay. Motion passes. Thank you. We'll continue with our city secretary, Brenda Dennis, will provide the roll call confirmation for consent agenda items one through eight and discussion items nine, 10, and 11.
For consent agenda items one through eight, a motion was made by Councilmember Dalla, seconded by Councilmember Hayward. Mayor Pro Tim Davis, councilmembers Larson, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed. Item number nine, which is ordinance number 20T14 on first reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Skagliola, seconded by Councilmember Hayward. Mayor Pro Tim Davis, councilmembers Larson, Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, Brown voted yes. No one voted no. Motion passed. Item number 11, ordinance number 20H15, first and final reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Skagliola, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Davis. Mayor Pro Tim Davis, councilmembers Dalla, Skagliola, Hayward, and Brown voted yes. Councilmember Larson voted no. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis. We'll continue with a workshop, a discussion, presentation regarding procurement procedures and policies on item number 12. Ms. Collier?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for allowing me to come speak to you guys tonight. My topic is not nearly as heavy as Chief Long's, thank goodness. So I'm pleased about that. So what I'm here to talk to you guys tonight, about tonight, is a purchasing workshop which was requested after some conversations that happened a couple of weeks ago. I want to talk about purchasing in general, where we were, where we are now, some of the challenges we still face, and then looking forward, kind of where do we go from here? So as you, many of you might remember, about two years ago, we did a full department review on purchasing. What we found is we had an outdated purchasing policy that had last been updated in 2011. We had ambiguity pertaining to the process. What purchases needed to come to council? When did they need to come to council? What's the difference between a requisition and a purchase order? We were exceeding our authorized spending levels. We had expired contracts. Our information in our system of record was sometimes not correct. And nobody was obtaining any formal purchasing training. We weren't teaching people. It was the predecessor teaching the next one, teaching the next one. So it was just however we'd always done it is how we've been doing it. So from that review, we implemented some mass changes. We updated our purchasing policy and rolled that out last March in 2019, revised it for formatting for ease of use, made clear and concise language changes so that staff could understand what they were reading. We added a new procurement authority section outlining the requirements for the different spend levels, whether it's $1,000, $25,000, $50,000, et cetera. And then we clarified the requirements related to council approval. When does council have to approve a purchase that's being made? We also implemented purchasing training shortly before that. The purchasing training covers rules and regulations, state law, city ordinance, city policy, our policy and our practice. We cover what the difference is between a requisition and a purchase order. And it's ongoing. It's not just a one and done, staff comes once and never comes again. It's something that we're going to revisit anytime we have policy and legislative changes that apply to that. So what we're going for is a holistic program focused on continual improvement. What we're trying to do is prevent us from having expired contracts and having, exceeding our authorized spending limits. One of the things that we've changed is our increased frequency of our vendor volume report that tells us how much money we've paid to a vendor. We were running that monthly. We're now running that and reviewing it weekly. We have quarterly contracts meetings where we go over contract expiration dates, contract spend, not to exceed authorization levels. And we meet with the department heads as well as city management every quarter on those topics. We're recording the approved not to exceeds in ENCODE, so in the system of record. I've also got a spreadsheet where I consolidate those and we're tracking those on a spreadsheet. And then, so just so you know, the city policy is that any cumulative vendor purchase exceeding $50,000 requires council approval. And this is well above and beyond the requirements of the state. They only require single purchases and contract value purchases over 50K to come to council. So we're doing above and beyond that. Something else that we've recently implemented, and I say recently very sincerely, it, last month was our first one, we are doing purchase order auditing now, where every month I'm taking five random POs between $1,000 and $50,000, gathering all of their documentation from the department and confirming that they're in compliance with our policy and with our procedures as a level of oversight, just to get them used to what our practices need to be. So just wanted to give you an idea of the complexity of purchasing. This is a decision tree that is part of our purchasing policy. And it's just a very high-level look at where the decision-making happens. You know, a department head or a staff member can look at this and go, okay, I'm going to spend about $30,000. What do I have to do to make this purchase? And you'll see the 25 to 50,000, it's a full page worth of decisions that have to be made. Ultimately, if they've got questions, I ask them to come see me. That way we can take care of them. To give you an idea of the volume that the purchasing office handles, we've got a staff of two, myself and one other, and we processed over 7,800 POs last year. We did 106 contracts that we reviewed and processed for signature, 114 bids or requests for proposals, and 31 of those were over $50,000. And as you probably remember, many of them were large projects in the million-dollar range for public works-type projects. So we've got a lot of work coming through our office with a relatively small staff. So we do, as much as we try and as hard as we try to not do things wrong, we still face some challenges. You saw a couple of weeks ago, we're still exceeding authorized not to exceed levels. There are a lot of reasons for this. You've got multiple departments placing orders with the same vendors, sometimes within minutes of each other, sometimes within seconds of each other. Sometimes requisitions are not being finalized in ENCODE. They're using that requisition to place an order with a vendor instead of getting that fully approved purchase order. It's a challenge to capture aggregate costs for things like postage for water bills and meters for developments and builders, because we just don't know from month to month how much of that we're going to have. How many invoices do we have to mail out? How many new development meters do we need to buy? We still have questions related to what requires council approval. We have assumed exceptions like utilities, Dan's Legal Services, and then taxes. Those are things that we are going to exceed $50,000 with every year, but we assume that you know we're going to spend it so they don't come to you guys. And then we've got our cost per service contracts. We just brought you one recently for ADP, for payroll, timekeeping services. Those services, you guys approved the contract, but we didn't set a not to exceed bar. So it's kind of hard to, again, that was one of those assumed situations. The other challenge we face is a limitation with ENCODE itself. ENCODE is, the version we're operating on is version nine. It does not have a robust reporting system. We do a volume report that only reflects payments made, so actual checks cut or ACHs transferred. So that underestimates PO spend. We can do a PO spend report, but that includes canceled and voided POs, so that tends to overestimate what we're spending. And you have to manually sort through that and run different pivot tables to get the actual numbers. It's not a canned report that just pops out. And then the reports aren't always accurate. We have a known issue with ENCODE that sometimes a vendor says, we've spent $0 with them this fiscal year, only to do a refresh of the system and find out we've spent $50,000 with them this year. It's a known issue. It requires finance to run that refresh or rebuild, but there's nothing we can do about it. We also have the inability to place a vendor cap on spending. So we don't have the ability to say, okay, you've hit $49,000. We're going to stop you from spending anymore with this vendor until we manually update it. It doesn't have that functionality. And then, you know, the answer to it all is, well, let's just get rid of this version of ENCODE and let's get something new. But the replacement cost for a financial system of record like this is exorbitant and the labor involved in making that transition and moving all the data and converting it and training is just beyond what we have at our fingertips right now. So as an example of these challenges, we brought to you CDW a couple of weeks ago and it was a large discussion. So 23 purchase orders have been issued to CDW for fiscal year 19 and 20 from five different departments. Two POs on the same day, on February 5th, came in, $61,100 for the police department, $43,057 for IT. We looked at the volume spend report on March 25th and it still showed we had only spent $34,000 with that vendor. So our departments still thought we were well within our not to exceed of that $95,000. What we didn't see was the PO report that showed we had issued POs in the amount of So the volume report the very next week, on April 1st, jumped up to that $101,400 in spend. And it was due to a significant number of invoices coming in at the end of March and having those checks cut. And so overnight, we literally jumped about $65,000 in PO spend that wasn't showing on the report that we had been using to find this stuff out. So we figured out, we had a known issue. So one of the things that we're doing to avoid exceeding those authorized levels is we are transitioning from that volume report that shows checks cut to the PO report. And we might overstate some of our expenses and come to you and say, well, we spent more than we thought we did, or we're spending this and we've actually less than that. Because it does reflect all money encumbered by created purchase orders. I'm also looking at doing some department head-specific training so that department heads know what to look at exactly and where to find it in ENCODE before they approve those requisitions to spend that money. We need to increase consistency in practice still. We're not perfect, probably never will be, but we're making very good gains. So we're going to continue our purchasing training. We're going to continue our monthly audit and we're going to, I'm going to provide those summary results to the department heads and to their assistant city manager so that if we find any cracks, we can start to fill those in and get them the education they need to make better decisions and make better process. Also going to do spot checks, pending requisitions to make sure that they're not sitting out there open indefinitely, that they're actually being turned into purchase orders and being finalized so that they show up on those PO reports. And then finally, we want to do a policy review and really look at the cumulative spend over 50K with a single vendor coming to council every time. It's, again, it's over and above the requirements of our local government code. I've talked to benchmark cities, New Braunfels, San Marcos, none of them do it. I've talked to Dan. None of their other city clients do it. And we're not really sure what value it adds to take, you know, $50,000, $1,000 purchases and say, okay, we spent $50,000, council, can you approve it? Even though it's on 50 different purchase orders throughout the year. And as the city continues to grow and we start spending more and more money, it's going to be even more difficult to manage. And we're going to keep coming to you with situations where we've gone over those authorized exceeds if that's what we continue to do. Now, that would not change if a single purchase was going to be $50,000 or more. Absolutely would still require council approval. Under no circumstance would that change. And all of our projects, aggregate contracts would still come over 50,000. So those are some of the things that we need to look at going forward.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Davis?
I just thank you for the briefing. I had a one-on-one earlier with, in the week with Dr. Brown and the staff, and I think they're definitely on the right path. I do think after the briefing that they gave us that there are some things that we as a council can do to make their life a little bit easier with regards to the rules that council has regarding purchases, as well as looking at some of the tools that they have. It just seems kind of interesting that, you know, as fast as software changes and develops, you know, it's interesting that you have a purchasing program and you really can go into the purchasing program and see what you've planned on purchasing or what you've already obligated and everything else. So I did ask them to include that in our upcoming budget discussions as to what ways we may have to go forward. So I thought it was a great briefing and I'm So I thought it was a great briefing and I'm glad you guys have got a good handle on this. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Dollar.
Well, being the new guy around here, I appreciate you doing that and it's been quite eye-opening over the last few months as I've learned what's going on around here. But I would kind of concur with what Mr. Davis says that, you know, if we're going to hold staff accountable, then we probably need to look at trying to find a way to give you the right tools to be able to do the job properly.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things that you brought to my attention. If you, I think it's slide number 11.
On the CDW example?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
You know, it seems like, you know, we're talking about, even if we do what we're trying to eliminate here is that we don't exceed the amount. On February 5th, we did exceed it with two purchases, but one of them was for $61,000 that had to be approved by council. Am I correct?
Only if we had not already had the established 95K authorization level. Yes, sir.
Okay. So that was already in there.
Yes, sir.
So 43 actually went over the amount. So there was only two purchases basically on this situation.
That threw us over. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, even with the, it's, you know, we're still going to have cracks in that foundation regardless of what we do. I noticed on, counsel on the go, that occurred on February 19th. I saw an invoice on March the 22nd. That's over 30 days old. I mean, some things are beyond our control.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
You know, but it's interesting, you know, thank you for the explanation. I think counsel understands that, you know, 8,000 contracts. I don't see this as a problem. I see it as an issue. The issue surfaced, that's all. But I don't think it's a major problem that we have in our city. Counsel, any other questions? Okay, it's just a workshop. There's no action required on this one, so we'll continue. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Okay, we'll continue with our closed session. Item number 13, City Council will recess into a closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act. The City Council will adjourn under section 551 dot 071 of the Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding pending litigation referencing items number one, which is cause number D dash one dash GN dash 18 dash 006 040 Sibyllo et al versus TCEQ. And item number two, Green Valley Special Utility District versus Assidius Schertz et al, case number 17 dash CV dash 00819 dash SS in the U.S. District Court, Western District of Texas, Austin Division, and reference Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, case number 18 dash 51092. Due to the virus, we are asking everyone in attendance that you please step outside so that we can have our closed session. The time is now 7:27. We will reconvene after our discussion.
Okay, the time is 8:03. We reconvene from our regular session, uh, to our regular session after our discussion and deliberation regarding the closed session in reference to agenda item number 13 pending litigation. There is no action required. Uh, so we'll move on to item number 14. I just wanted to mention, uh, agenda item number 14, an update on the drainage project. This is an information packet that was provided to council and is available for public view. So we'll proceed with announcements, uh, announcements by our city manager, Dr. Brown.
Okay.
A request by the mayor of council for items to be placed on the future agenda. Is there anything? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to announcements, uh, by council members. Mayor Proton Davis?
Nothing, sir.
Mayor Proton Larson? Mayor, I'm sorry. I was gonna say Scott Larson because, uh, council member Scott was not here. It threw me off. Hey, council member Dala?
Nothing, sir.
Council member Skagiliola?
Nada.
Council member Hayward?
Nothing.
Council member Brown?
Nothing.
Okay, I have no further announcements. The time is now 8:04. We stand adjourned.